I call this meeting of Township High School District 211, School Board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hintra.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Lefever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We will begin tonight's meeting with recognitions. Dr. Cates, could you please introduce?
Welcome to everyone. We are very pleased to honor and celebrate some outstanding students and their families. This time, I'd like to introduce Associate Superintendent Dr. Lisa Small, who will introduce these fine teachers to us and the students.
Thank you, Board of Education members and Dr. Cates. Tonight, we are taking time to honor some very talented musicians and their directors. Students, as your director introduces you, please come forward and receive your award, standing next to the podium. Additionally, family members of students who are being introduced, we ask you to stand and be recognized as your child is being introduced by your director. Helping honor these students tonight are Palatine Principal Gary Steiger, Assistant Principal Mike Arthur, Fremd Principal Kurt Teniper and Assistant Principal Eric Dolan, Conant Principal Julie Novak and Assistant Principal Mark Langer, Schaumburg Assistant Principal Michelle Napier, and Hoffman Estates Principal Josh Shoemaker and Assistant Principal Brian Harlan. We'll start with Palatine High School Band Director Carlos Esquivel. Carlos has been teaching in District 211 for 10 years. In 2013, he became the Director of Bands at Palatine High School. Carlos has earned degrees from the University of Illinois and Vandercook School of Music. Carlos is also a proud graduate of District 211. Carlos?
Good evening, Dr. Small, Dr. Cates, Board members. And thank you tonight for letting us recognize all of our ILMEA All-State students. ILMEA stands for Illinois Music Educators Association, which is the music version of IHSA. Students from across Illinois in band choir orchestra, jazz music composition, and future music educators compete at the regional level. Through the regional auditions, the students here tonight were selected for the honors ensembles, the most selective group in ILMEA. As their teachers, we are honored to introduce our students tonight. It is my pleasure to introduce Brian Sonderegger, an exceptional student from our band program at Palatine High School. He is here tonight with his parents, Dave and Amy Sonderegger. Brian has consistently been one of the hardest working students in our program, and it has been remarkable seeing him grow as a musician and a young adult over the past four years. His hard work has paid off as he has received several musical accolades, including performing as the principal clarinetist in the PHS Wind Symphony, PHS Full Orchestra, and Schaumburg Youth Symphony Orchestra. He's also participated in the D-211 Honors Orchestra three times, Honor Band three times, and ILMEA District 7 Band three times. By being selected to participate in the All-State Honor Band, Brian has achieved one of the highest honors that a high school student musician in Illinois can receive. In our band program, he has developed into a leader among his peers by being a marching band section leader and secretary for our band leadership board and inspiring those around him to follow their passions. Although he hasn't committed to a college quite yet, he plans to keep music as a part of his life in college. We're extremely proud to call our student a pirate. Congratulations on your accomplishment, Brian.
Christina Collins is the Fremd High School Choir Director. She's been teaching choir at Fremd since 2014. Before coming to Fremd, she was the choir director at Batavia High School. She has attended the University of Illinois at Champaign-Urbana and DePaul University. Christina not only directs several choirs at Fremd, but she also sings herself in the St. Charles Singers during her free time. Christina?
Thank you, Dr. Cates and School Board members, for the opportunity to present tonight for Fremd Choir. I'm very pleased to introduce the four students who were selected for the All-State Honor Choir this year. All of these students are outstanding musicians and dedicated leaders in the Fremd program, even going to rehearsal right after this, so they never stop working. I'm very proud of them and what they have accomplished in order to become the top singers in their voice part for the north and northwestern suburbs. First, we have Mary Kate Baughman, who is here with her parents Kathleen and David. Mary Kate is a senior in chamber singers, singing alto II. She's been involved in choir all four years in high school, as well as a cappella, show choir, and numerous theater productions at Fremd and around the community. She also serves as the current spirit leader in choir to promote a sense of community by regularly leading team-building activities, and she plans to study stage management next year. Pranit Chekicharla is here with his mom, Nelema. Pranit is a senior in chamber singers, singing bass I. He has been involved in choir for three years at Fremd and is currently the bass section leader this year. He has experience in a cappella, show choir, and the musical, and next year, he plans to study computer engineering. Denise Carlson is here with her parents, Pauline and George. Denise is a sophomore in chamber singers, singing soprano II. She is in both choir and band and has a busy schedule serving as the drum major for marching band, as well as being an active member of a cappella and show choir. She will continue as a choir intern next year for the introductory treble choir and serve as a leader to the younger sopranos and altos. Mayuri Shrikant is here with her parents, Vadehi and Shrikant. Mayuri is a senior in chamber singers, singing alto II. She's been involved in Fremd choir for three years, as well as the Advanced Women's A Cappella Group, and joins show choir and musical this year. She plans to study neuroscience next year in the fall. And at the All-State Festival, they all worked with Dr. Allred from the University of Utah in Salt Lake City and enjoyed singing in a mass choir of over 200 advanced choir students from around Illinois. I'm so proud of all of them. Please help me in congratulating again Mary Kate, Pranit, Denise, and Mayuri.
Marla Caballero, Fremd High School Orchestra Director. Marla is in her 24th year of teaching in District 211, beginning as a traveling director between Palatine and Fremd High Schools. During her time at Fremd, the orchestra program has gone from eight students to over 100 students in four different orchestras. In 2014, Marla was named the Outstanding Teacher of the Illinois Chapter of American String Teachers Association. Marla is also a proud graduate of District 211. Marla?
Thank you, Dr. Small, Dr. Cates, and School Board, for this opportunity to recognize our students. It is my pleasure to introduce two students, one of which is here tonight, but both students were selected for the ILMEA All-State Honors Orchestra this year and had the opportunity to work with conductor Jeffrey Grogan, who serves as education and community engagement conductor of the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra. Not only did the students learn from Mr. Grogan, but I was inspired as well. Unfortunately, one of my students was not able to be here, but sophomore Cameron Chu, sorry, his last name, or cellist Cameron Chu, there we go, is a sophomore, as I mentioned, and is an avid chamber musician and a member of the Symphony Orchestra at Fremd. Actually just performed the Kabelowski Cello Concerto at our Concerto Aria concert this last week on Tuesday. Is also a member of the Music Institute of Chicago's Academy Chamber Orchestra. I always like to ask the students what they learned and what they brought back, and Cameron shared that he was inspired to play at a higher level because of the other musicians who are around him. But now, I get to introduce someone who's actually here. So, junior violinist Hannah Lynn is here with her parents, Terry Lynn and Helen Mao. In addition to being a member of Fremd Symphony Orchestra, Hannah works on the Viking Log, is an active chamber musician, and a member of the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra. When I asked Hannah to share what she learned from her All-State experience, she mentioned that the importance, that it was the importance of looking and listening and in being in the moment. I think something that's probably just a good life lesson all around. In addition, she really enjoyed learning how to play the ukulele during breaks. My hope is always that students will have, after coming back from this experience and being inspired by other musicians from around the state, that they will also bring back what they learned and inspire the students that are in the Fremd Orchestra program. And it's exciting to see how Hannah and Cameron do that on a daily basis. Would you please join me again in congratulating Hannah and Cameron? Thank you.
Matt Moore is the Band Director at Fremd High School. He's been the Director of Bands there for the past 15 years and the Music Department Chair for the past four years. Under his direction, the Fremd bands have received numerous awards and accolades for their symphonic, jazz, and marching band performances. Matt?
Thank you very much, Dr. Small, Dr. Cates, and the School Board members for recognizing our All-State musicians tonight. It gives me great pleasure to recommend four very talented Fremd band musicians for their accomplishments this year with the ILMEA All-State Music Education Conference. I'd first like to recognize Senior Hancin Mock, who is joined tonight with her mother, Mary Mock. Hancin plays the flutes and was selected to perform in the ILMEA Honors Band at the All-State Conference. Hancin is a member of the Fremd Wind Symphony, our top band, as well as the Symphony Orchestra of Viking Marching Band, where she was flute section leader and the student-run flute choir. Hancin always has a smile on her face, one of the greatest things I like about her, and has positively influenced many younger flutes as an outstanding student leader. She states that her favorite memory from performing at All-State was just listening and watching all the other incredible musicians perform. Her college choice for next year is still being determined, but she plans to major in English and creative writing. Congratulations to Hancin on your many musical accomplishments throughout high school, and thank you for all your service to the Fremd bands. Next, I would like to introduce Senior Orenze Okamore, who is joined tonight with his parents, George and Shania Okamore. Orenze is a talented saxophonist, vocalist, dancer, and composer. He's being recognized tonight for his musical achievements as a composer with his band composition Opus I being awarded third place in the Large Ensemble Division for the ILMEA Composition Contest at the All-State Conference. At the conference, he also participated in the composition track, where he was fortunate to work with many collegiate and professional composers, other student composers, and attended many significant workshops. Orenze's favorite memory from the ILMEA Conference was having his own piece showcased and also critiqued by numerous other talented composers. Orenze is also a member of the Fremd Wind Symphony, performing on the alto saxophone. This spring, the band will rehearse and hopefully perform his composition Opus I, although it is extremely challenging. But I think we can do it. I'm excited about it. Orenze's college choice for next year is still being determined, but he plans to major in music composition and physics. We wish Orenze all the best and look forward to hearing more of his compositions in the future. Next is Senior Rio Torada, who is joined tonight with his parents, Dami Jong and Jay Choi. Rio plays clarinets and was selected to perform the ILMEA Honors Band as well at the All-State Conference. Rio is a member of the Fremd Wind Symphony, as well as the Symphony Orchestra. Outside of Fremd High School, Rio performs in the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra and Jazz Ensemble on saxophone, and was also selected as featured soloist for the Fremd Concerto Aria Concert, which Mrs. Caballero spoke about, where he performed part of Mozart's Clarinet Concerto two nights ago with our Symphony Orchestra. Rio states that his favorite memory from the ILMEA All-State Conference was listening to all the other outstanding ILMEA bands and orchestras perform. Rio's college choice is currently still being decided, but he's planning to major in aerospace engineering. Congratulations to Rio on your many musical accomplishments throughout Fremd High School. And finally, I'd like to introduce Junior Nick Zoblick, who is joined tonight with his parents, Chris and Joanna. Nick is a junior and plays trumpet and was selected to perform in the top band, the Honors Band at All-State. Nick is a member of the Fremd Wind Symphony Symphony Orchestra and our top jazz band, the Jazz Ensemble. Outside of Fremd, Nick also plays in the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra. Nick stated that his favorite memory from All-State was seeing the pieces come together so quickly with so many motivated people in the ensemble. Nick is a very talented trumpet player that has inspired many of our other trumpet players to play on a much higher level through his example. I hope we get to see Nick again recognized next year, since he's only a junior, and congratulations to him on this very significant musical accomplishment.
Next, we have Tim Cole, Conant High School Chorus Director. Tim is in his eighth year at Conant High School, where he serves as the Choral Director and the Department of Music Chair. Tim is a graduate of Augustana College, the Vandercook College of Music, and Concordia University in River Forest. Tim?
Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity this evening. I am proud to introduce Molly Holcomb, who is here tonight with her mother, Jennifer Holcomb. Molly is being recognized for her second-place finish in the state of Illinois for her composition written for a small vocal ensemble. Molly has been working on her composition Song of the Stars for years now and has put in countless hours of thoughtful revisions in order to achieve this honor. Throughout high school, Molly has developed skills as a vocalist, instrumentalist, and now as a young composer. The entire music department at Conant has benefited from working with Molly. We are sure she will use her well-rounded skills in music to contribute greatly to her college career and professional life. Congratulations, Molly, on this impressive achievement, and thank you for enriching the music classrooms at Conant and in District 211.
Devin Gottzicki is in her first year as the Conant High School Orchestra Director. Previously, she was the Director of Orchestras at St. Charles East High School. She has received her undergraduate degree from the University of Illinois and is currently working towards a Master's in Music Education from Illinois State University. Devin?
Hello, thank you, Dr. Small and Dr. Cates and Board, for having us all here this evening. I'm going to talk about three individuals that are here. They are young, they are sophomores and a junior, so I'm excited to see them continue to grow. They participate in our Symphony Orchestra at Conant High School, as well as orchestra, the District 211 Honors Orchestra that just performed this past weekend, and other orchestras in our community. First, I'd like to introduce Sophia Kim, who's accompanied by her mother, Ms. Shin, and Sung Kwan Kim, here with us this evening. Sophie is a junior and plays violin in the top orchestra here at Conant. She was the second violin principal in the District 7 Festival, where she then went on to earn 11th chair, second violin in the All-State Honors Orchestra. She is dedicated and very interested in violin and a great addition to our orchestra program. Congratulations, Sophie. Next, I would like to introduce Makiba Karida, who is accompanied by Mrs. and Mr. Karida here with us this evening. Makiba is a sophomore violinist at Conant and has a great attitude and talent. She received Concertmaster in the District 7 Festival, where she then went on to state to earn third-chair first violin out of 96 total violinists, which places her at the top 3% of violinists in the state. Way to rock, Makiba. And last, we have James Prusell, violist, excuse me, who is accompanied here tonight by his father, Mr. Prusell. James is a sophomore and has not fallen far from his family tree of excellent musicians. He is hardworking and a pleasure to have in the Conant Music Program. While at All-State, he earned fifth-chair viola in Honors All-State Orchestra, competing with 46 other violas throughout the state. Well done, James, and I can't wait to see all of your musical future endeavors. Congratulations.
Vinnie Anindino will now introduce our students we're honoring from both band and orchestra from Schaumburg High School. Mr. Anindino has been the Band Director at Schaumburg High School since 2011 and the Director of Bands and Music Department Chair since 2014. Vinnie has degrees from Northwestern University, the University of Illinois, and has just finished coursework this past summer at the University of Michigan. Vinnie?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Cates, Dr. Small, and School Board, for your time this evening. Along with his father, Steve, I'm thrilled to introduce Mr. Vincent Chang. Vincent has worked relentlessly over the past four years to improve as a musician. He came into high school as a strong freshman flute player, but also began to learn oboe that winter. Vincent quickly took to the instrument, staying after school most days to practice. He rose to become the principal oboist in our top band by his junior year, while also playing oboe and English horn in the Schaumburg Youth Symphony Orchestra and earning the principal oboe position in the District 211 Honor Band and Honors Orchestra. This fall, after playing the instrument for less than three years, Vincent was named principal oboe in the ILMEA District 7 Orchestra, and this January, earned the principal oboe chair in the All-State Honors Orchestra, recognizing Vincent as the top oboe player in the state of Illinois. In addition to his musical achievements, Vincent has been an outstanding section leader for the Saxon Marching Band and Vice President of both the Band Leadership Board and Triumph Music Honor Society. Vincent is a wonderfully positive presence in any room, and he has a unique ability to make people laugh and feel valued. After graduation this spring, Vincent plans to major in oboe performance. Given his growth over just the last four years, we cannot wait to see what the future has in store for him. Congratulations, Vincent Chang. All right, along with her mother, Joanne, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Abigail Flunderman. Abigail has been an outstanding leader in the Schaumburg Band program, taking advantage of nearly every instrumental music opportunity our school has to offer. She is one of the hardest-working students I've had the privilege to teach, not only excelling as a trumpet player, but also in learning French horn and doubling on that instrument on many occasions. Abigail has been a three-year section leader for the marching band and serves as an intern with our freshman band. She's also been a three-year member of the District 211 Honor Band and co-principal trumpet in the 211 Honors Orchestra. This fall, Abigail earned a position in the District 7 Band, and in January, was selected for the All-State Honors Band, putting her among the top trumpet players in the state of Illinois. Outside of school, Abigail has performed at the Schaumburg Youth Symphony Orchestra, Harper College Wind Symphony, and Spring Valley Concert Band. And outside of music, Abigail is involved in a variety of AP coursework and is a member of National Honor Society. Next year in college, Abigail plans to major in music education. Her future students will be lucky to have such a dedicated and kind person as their teacher. Congratulations, Abigail Flunderman. Along with his parents, Anna and Arturo, it's my honor to introduce Mr. Brandon James. Brandon is a dynamic and passionate leader at Schaumburg High School, possessing an intrinsic and voracious love for learning. At SHS, Brandon has served as a three-year section leader for the marching band, student intern for the freshman band, and president of the Band Leadership Board. Outside of Schaumburg, he's also been highly active in music, including performing in the Midwest Young Artists Merritt Combo and performing last spring under Ricardo Mutti, music director of the Chicago Symphony Orchestra. Outside of music, Brandon has been a varsity swimmer, National Honor Society member, and has enrolled in AP coursework across many departments. This fall, Brandon earned a position in the District 7 Orchestra and Jazz Combo, placing him in the top tier of student musicians in the area. At last year's Illinois Music Education Conference, he was selected as the second trombone player in the All-State Honors Jazz Ensemble. And this year, I'm thrilled to announce that Brandon was selected as the lead trombone player in that ensemble, placing him in the top two jazz trombonists in the state. Brandon has found significant success in many areas, and he's responded with both humility and an increased drive to achieve his next goals. Upon graduation this spring, Brandon plans to double-major in Jazz Studies and Economics, a fitting combination for anyone who knows him. Congratulations, Brandon James. And along with his parents, Heather and Gary, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Tom Schluckbeer. Tom is an outstanding trombone player in the Schaumburg Band, currently playing in the Wind Symphony and Trombone Quartet. He's been a member of the District 211 Honors Orchestra, Elgin Youth Orchestra, and ILMEA District 7 Band. And outside of music, is involved in swimming and National Honor Society. So, about a year ago, Tom told me that he started composing and asked if I would look over a piece he had been working on. It was the first movement of a symphony for full orchestra. Within about a month, Tom finished the entire symphony, followed by a piece for concert band before the end of the year. Since then, he's composed a piece for brass quintet, which was performed at Schaumburg this fall, and his safari suite for orchestra. This piece in five movements was inspired by his experience in Africa while on safari, and specifically, the Schopenhauer idea of will to live in the hunting and scared-running of predators and prey. This piece earned Tom first-place honors for large instrumental ensemble composition in this year's ILMEA Composition Contest. As only a junior, we look forward to hearing Tom continue to develop his compositional voice next year and beyond. Congratulations, Tom Schluckbeer. And along with her father, Jim, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Micah Edwards. Mrs. Carlson, Micah's orchestra director at Schaumburg, reflects that Micah is a cheerful, sweet-natured person and a very dedicated, talented, and passionate violinist. To put it simply, she loves to play her violin and she loves to learn about music. It is really a joy to work with her because she is so enthusiastic. Last year, she made District 7 Orchestra as a freshman, and this year, District 7 and the Honors Orchestra at the All-State level as a sophomore. She's been studying the violin for 10 years and is currently in both the Schaumburg High School Symphony and the Midwest Philharmonic. She also has played in the District 211 Honors Orchestra in the past two years. Although she loves orchestral playing, Mrs. Carlson sees her growing passion for chamber music, which shows her drive to be both an independent and collaborative musician. She's currently in three quartets and a trio. Not only an artist in sound, she's a visual artist and a poet. She has an emerging interest in diet nutrition as a possible avenue of study, but she definitely wants to further her musical study after high school. Congratulations, Micah Edwards. And along with his parents, Scott and Kamiko, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matthew Nolan. Matthew began to learn the violin at age five while attending Duely Elementary School, and in sixth grade, he started attending the Midwest Conservatory in Hoffman Estates. He was accepted into the District 7 ILMEA Junior Orchestra and has been a member of the Senior District 7 Orchestra for the past two years. This year, landing a spot in the Honors Orchestra at the All-State Conference as well. He's been a part of the District 211 Honors Orchestra for the last two years, and he also received a Best of Day Award at IHSA Solo and Ensemble Contest as a freshman. Outside of playing violin, Matthew enjoys running cross-country in the fall. He's also a fluent Japanese speaker and has passed the AP Japanese Test and has received a seal of biliteracy in Japanese. In his free time, he likes to listen to recordings of classical music on YouTube. And while all of these say a lot about Matthew as a student and musician, Mrs. Carlson says that first and foremost, Matthew is a kind, humble person who genuinely cares about people. Congratulations, Matthew Nolan.
Jerry Lowry, Hoffman Estates Band Director. Jerry Lowry joined Hoffman Estates High School as the music department chair and director of bands this year. Previously, Jerry served as assistant principal, fine arts chair, and band director in La Grange School District 105. Jerry regularly provides clinics for students and educators at Northern Illinois University, jazz at the Lincoln Center in New York, and the IMEC Conference in Peoria. Jerry?
Dr. Cates, Dr. Small, and distinguished members of the board, it can't be said enough, please, thank you very much for the opportunity to present these students to you. Joined by his mother, Maylie, I'd like to introduce to you Grant Lee. Being this is my first year at Hoffman Estates High School, I've only had the distinguished honor of working with Grant Lee for the last year, but I would probably still take credit for his expertise. But I knew of him long before then. He was, this is his second year in a row here, which means he's been named the top bass player in the state of Illinois for two years in a row. His reputation as a musician is well-known in the Midwest and around the country. He's an active member of the Merritt School of Music in Chicago and performs professionally in Chicago and surrounding areas. Grant's standing as the top jazz bass player in the state of Illinois is well-deserved. His musicianship, focus, and discipline set him apart from most human beings. He is steeped in the historical and cultural aspects of our music. His musicianship is impeccable, and we are truly excited to watch his future unfold. The sky is the limit for him. Grant Lee.
To recognize high school students who excel in volunteerism and community service, the Daily Herald sponsored its Seventeenth Annual Leadership Team for 2017-2018, I'm proud to announce that High School District 211 had three representatives named to the ten-member first team. These outstanding students were featured in a special section of the January eighteen edition of the Daily Herald. On behalf of the Board of Education and the High School District 211 community, I'd like to congratulate these students on being selected as Daily Herald Leadership Team Award winners. Board President, Mrs. Burke, will present each of them with a certificate in just a few moments. I would like to invite the faculty sponsors to introduce our student leaders and share some highlights about each one. Please follow this order when coming to the podium. From Schaumburg High School, we have social studies teacher, Mary Lopez, followed by William Framed High School Social Studies Teacher and Department Chair Heather Schroeder, and then William Framed High School English Teacher, Kristy O'Donnell. Mary?
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce Chrislyn Cardoza, and please join me in welcoming her parents, Elizabeth and Norman Cardoza. When I saw her name on my class list, my first thought was, oh, good, Andrew has a sister. I soon discovered that she far exceeded the already positive expectations that I had. Chrislyn is a student who leads the classroom in every way. Possessing innate gifts, she shines when these are combined with her incredible work ethic. Beyond her own success, however, she contributes to the success of all students in the classroom. She does the little things well. Assignments are always completed on time and to the best of her ability, and this attention to detail sets the example for others to follow. Armed with a quick wit and an even quicker smile, she truly challenged and elevated her classmates. She leads in many ways, big and small. When a classmate was out due to a family tragedy, she helped to organize note-taking to ease her classmates' transition back in. She's one of those students that teachers are grateful to have. Chrislyn has so long been a natural leader that I presumed, correctly, as it turns out, talking to other teachers, that she seemingly served in this same role in all the classes she's taken. Margaret Mead famously said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, concerned citizens can change the world." Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Chrislyn has indeed changed life for the better at our school due to her astounding breadth of involvement through all aspects of student life. She's been an athlete and a mathlete and has extensive involvement in our music programs. She's been a key member of service organizations, such as freshman mentors, lead-out loud, student ambassadors, and student council. She is recognized as a valued leader as the editor-in-chief of the student newspaper, co-president of the National Honor Society, and as a member of the Principals Advisory Board, and yet somehow finds the time still to get all that homework done. Please help me in congratulating Chrislyn Cardoza on her very well-deserved recognition as a member of the Daily Herald Leadership Team.
I'm so proud to introduce to you Sophia Mavramatis, along with her parents, Jessie and Melissa Mavramatis. Sophia stands out by far. Her heart and her soul are driven towards helping other people. She has just such a strong character, and it's evident in all the volunteer work that she does. She truly encompasses community. From volunteering as our junior feeder-school dance coach to my student intern in AP Psychology, she is my right-hand woman. And you can even see in today, she doesn't even know some of these students, and she's sitting here on the sidelines, nodding and clapping and smiling and mentioning under her breath, wow, that's great. So I'm so proud of Sophia. She not only is in my classroom as a student leader, she also is a leader on the executive board for our freshman mentor program, VAMP, and she also is volunteering at a Palatine Nursing Center as well. So she truly spans a lifespan of help out in our community. She is beautiful inside and out, and she's definitely a leader, and when she walks into any room, she brightens the room. So thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to present Abi Balu and his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Balu. It is my honor to introduce Abi, as we recognize him for being named to the Daily Herald Leadership Team. I'd like to start with a quote. "That kid has charisma." This quote was said by another teacher after meeting Abi for the first time for all of five seconds. I could have started with how bright Abi is, or how hard-working, kind, optimistic, funny, gracious, or how gifted, the list goes on. But I wanted to start with his ability to be all of these things and connect with other people so easily. These are the qualities that make him such a strong leader and such a good person. I was fortunate enough to have Abi in class for two separate years, and I say fortunate because Abi just makes any class better. Perhaps it is his ability to spur and ignite discussion or his ability to laugh at himself and lighten the classroom atmosphere. There are really just so many wonderful and memorable Abi moments I could talk about, but what makes him so special are the little things he would do each day. Like when Abi would encourage a classmate who did not feel comfortable sharing in class, or the fact that he would show genuine gratitude for the class and everything he learned, not only for me, but from his classmates as well. Abi is truly a leader, and I have faith that wherever his path takes him in the future, including Duke next year, he will continue to use that unteachable and powerful quality for bettering the world and those around him. So please join me in congratulating Abi Balu. Thank you.
The Congressional App Challenge, now in its third year, is a public effort to encourage students to learn how to write software code through annual district-wide competitions hosted by members of Congress for their district. Participating students code original software applications for the chance to be selected for recognition by their member of Congress, win prizes, and have their work displayed in the Capitol Building in Washington, DC. I'm proud to say that we have a team of four students from Palatine High School who won the app competition, sponsored in Illinois's eighth congressional district. Board President, Mrs. Burke, will present each of them with a certificate for their honor in just a moment. We can also celebrate the contributions of these four students for having recently organized and led the Code 211 Hackathon event. The event included one hundred and twenty-five students from across the district who filled a high school media center for both Friday and Saturday nights to create a software product from scratch. At this time, I'd like to ask Palatine High School mathematics teacher, John Nally, to come to the podium. John is here this evening to introduce us to these outstanding young men and tell us briefly about their recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. Thank you. I would like to introduce them one at a time, even though the four of them are really good friends and they do a lot of things together. The first person is Bargav Yadavali. He is here with his mother, Lakshmi. Evan Echols is here with his parents, Tricia and Jim. Abi Sikseena is here with Rangoli and Alok, his parents. And Raoul Gudavada with his parents, Sarada and Siva. The four of them, as Dr. Cates has mentioned, were the Congressman Rajakrishnamarthy was the Congressional App Award winners, and they also were Code 211, very important part of the getting the student-based project off the ground. The four of them are involved in cross-country, track, math team, tennis, BPA, but their app is called Grubber, and it's G-R-U-B-Y-R. And the grub, for senior boys, you would think food, that's probably pretty appropriate. And so, it was created so that they could, one of us could go to the app and see if we could get a pretty good deal in the evening for a quick meal, something cheaper in the evening. And this way, also the businesses could maximize their profits and not have food go to waste. And so, it would be something like that that you could have the app for. But the four of them, like I said, they're very good friends. They're in the independent study computer science. They work together phenomenally. They help the other kids as well, but they do more than just that. So I congratulate them, and thank you again.
Each student who prepares for college is familiar with the emphasis placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the American College Test or the ACT, as it is commonly called. The highest composite score a student can earn on the ACT is a thirty-six. Statistically, less than one-tenth of one percent of students who take the ACT achieve this highest score. Tonight, we recognize a student from William Framed High School who has achieved this remarkable accomplishment. Since we began tracking students who have achieved this highest possible score on the ACT twenty years ago, we now have a hundred and ten students who have earned this outstanding achievement. On behalf of the Board of Education and High School District 211, I'd like to congratulate our student. We have a certificate for her that Board President, Mrs. Burke, will present in just a moment. Our student will be introduced by a sponsor whom she has selected. Could we have Framed High School English Teacher, Kristy O'Donnell, please return to the podium to introduce this exceptional student?
Hello again. I'd like to present Hannah Lynn and her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Lynn. It is my honor to introduce Hannah as we recognize her for the outstanding achievement of receiving the highest possible score of thirty-six on her ACT. It is not surprising to me that Hannah received a perfect score on her ACT because Hannah is simply a wonder in terms of what she is capable of. She is exceedingly bright and curious. Her writing displays a level of sophistication that cannot be taught, and her level of insight and intelligence is evident in everything she does. She never speaks without thinking of a thoughtful response that follows clear logic, so when Hannah speaks, people listen. Hannah's schedule also shows she is able to balance a multitude of challenging classes as well as demanding extracurriculars, including a TED Ed club she started this year. What is most surprising about Hannah, though, is her modesty. She listens to feedback and does not settle for work below her potential. Such characteristics are a testament to not only her genuine passion for education, but also her passion to improve the world round her. Her intelligence, curiosity, and ability to persist through any problem obviously served her well in the ACT, but more importantly, these traits will continue to serve Hannah throughout her life. She is an exemplary human being, and her potential is something that no test can measure. I am honored to present Hannah for this excellent achievement, just one among many more I'm sure she'll achieve in her lifetime since she's only a junior right now. Please join me in congratulating Hannah Lynn.
It is always an honor to have local heroes among us, and this evening, we are joined by three in particular. The quick-thinking reactions of these individuals each made a difference in someone's life. The Board of Education is pleased to recognize each of them for their heroics. Board President, Mrs. Burke, has a certificate for each. I'd like to ask William Framed High School teacher, English Becky Schumer, to come to the podium to introduce us to someone very special.
Tyler, they didn't come to see me, they came to see you. It is an honor to introduce Tyler Matuzek and his parents. Please stand, Paul and Debbie. I have to admit that it took me about a month to remember Tyler's name in class because I only knew him as Waffle Boy. This is because every teacher who has the privilege of having Tyler in class gets to know something really fun about him. And last year, in his English class, it was a demonstration speech? He made waffles for his English class. So this year, when his English teacher found out that I was lucky enough to have Tyler, she told me the story of Waffle Boy. So anyway, Waffle Boy is here beside me, and I am very honored because I've known from the get-go that he was a kind, humble, outgoing person. He's in an AP Language and Composition class with many, many high-level students. But what stands out is his helpfulness and his optimism. This is a class that does not entail a final exam, and two days before finals, Tyler brought ten pizzas in for his classmates so that they could prepare for finals with a full stomach. So this is the kind of boy he is. And in light of what happened recently in Florida, the pleasure truly is to stand up here before you and share with you something heroic. In November, Tyler heard a struggle. He noticed his neighbor gasping, and he went into CPR mode as a junior in high school, saved this man's life. Paramedics arrived and credited him with saving this man's life. Without him, the man may not be here. So please join me in congratulating him and thanking him for his civic duty.
Hoffman Estates High School Principal Joshua Shoemaker is here this evening to introduce us to two additional very special people.
I'm certainly proud to be in front of you tonight to introduce two members of our Hoffman Estates High School community. Both of these exceptional humans collaborated to assist a student in need who is struggling in the pool during a PE class. In addition to being proud to introduce them to you tonight, I am grateful for their actions because by looking out for others' well-being and safety, they demonstrate what it means to be a hawk at Hoffman Estates High School. Please join me in recognizing sophomore Kira Wyland and her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Wyland. Kira's teachers describe her as quiet and kind, with a passion for everything that she does. When one of her teachers heard that she had a role in this lifesaving event, they were not surprised, as she cares deeply for people and has a sense of empathy well beyond her age. As the principal of Hoffman Estates High School, it does not surprise me that she is being recognized tonight for helping others, and it is part of her nature to think fast, act purposefully, and be kind. Kira, we are grateful tonight that you are a member of our community. Next, I would like to introduce Chris Fetterman. Mr. Fetterman is joined tonight by his wife and two children. Mr. Fetterman has served as a teacher assistant at Hoffman Estates High School for the past sixteen years. During his time at Hoffman Estates, Chris has also served as our swimming coach for both the boys and the girls program and our water polo coach for both the boys and the girls programs. I personally coached alongside Chris for many years and was not surprised to hear that he had taken quick action to prevent a dangerous situation from occurring. Chris takes his role and safety extremely seriously. He not only takes an active role each day in teaching our students how to be safe in the water, but also teaches them how to swim, a skill that stays with them long after they graduate Hoffman Estates High School. Chris forms positive connections with students and embodies our core values of respect, acceptance, and realizing your potential as an athlete, student, and human. We are grateful for Chris's impact in this lifesaving situation and in every positive way. We are grateful for Chris's impact in this lifesaving situation and in every positive way that he builds into our students. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize him tonight.
It is often said that it takes a village to raise our young people, and tonight, we celebrate the partnerships that we have with many businesses throughout our villages that help us with our work in developing young people for their lives after high school. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mark Kovak, who will introduce an additional person. I'd also like to ask Board President, Mrs. Burke, to join Mr. Kovak at the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. The Board of Education, it's my privilege this evening to make note of some wonderful partners in our community that help us to achieve our mission. It certainly is a dedicated effort by District 211 to prepare all of its students for their transition to life after high school, whether that be continuing their education, service in one of our military branches, or getting a job directly in the workforce. That transition for teenagers can sometimes be very stressful, particularly if the student is one who qualifies for special education services. To support these students and their unique needs, District 211 provides a highly individualized transition services program, which includes partnerships with community businesses to support internships where students can engage in true-to-life work experiences. Today, we take time to recognize these community business partners and thank them for the role they play in our students' development. This year, 27 local businesses opened their doors to our students, and these businesses' commitments to our students is second to none. It allows us to honor our own commitment to preparing these students for their next steps in life. I'd like to ask Patrick Abraham, our district's Transition Services Coordinator, to come to the podium so that he could introduce the representatives from those business partners who are able to be with us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cates, and our Board of Education for your continued support of our students out in the community for these real-work-life experiences that are second to none and providing extraordinary opportunities for our students, so thank you. I'd like to acknowledge our community business partners, so if you can come up and be recognized for your contributions to supporting our students on a daily basis. Representing Bueller YMCA, Sandy Ballenbacher. From Friendship Village, Anthony Rosado. Representing Gordon Food Service Store of Palatine, Brian Wells. From IKEA, Jen Libertini, Scott Kay, Carolyn Nuzzo, and Vanessa Herman. Representing Innovative Components, Christine Machel. Representing Partners for our Communities, Kathy Millen. From the Rosewood Care Center, Kelly Nash. Representing The Grand at Twin Lakes, Jennifer Lozansky. From TJ Maxx of Palatine, Jesse Kemp. And representing the Willow Creek Care Center, Ed Sladkov and Martine Stein. Please join me in thanking our community business partners for their continued support of our students.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate all our students, staff, and community members that have been recognized here this evening. We will take a 10-minute break to allow for pictures, and then we'll proceed with the remaining business portion of our meeting. Thank you. Again, our business portion of our meeting with citizens appearances and presentation, is there anybody in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign the yellow sheet to address the Board of Education who would like to this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead. We have a Joe Sonafelt, please, Sonafelt.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Sonafelt. I'm the president of the Mount Prospect District 57 Board of Education, and I'm a candidate for State Senate here in the 27th District. I want to let you know that one of the reasons I decided to run for State Senate is because I think we need to change the way we fund education in the state. We rely far too much on local property taxes to fund our public schools to an extent that no other state does, and it's a system that's unfair and it's unsustainable. So, I think in order to, as we hear louder and louder calls for property tax freezes, that we need to address real property tax relief by looking for alternative funding mechanisms for our schools. The recent change in the school funding formula is a good first step, but it has to be fully funded. And I am very serious about identifying sources of revenue at the state level to fund education, starting with transitioning to a progressive income tax. I won't go into the details of policy, but I just wanted to come here tonight and let you know that that's the reason I'm running. In addition to that, I think it's time to rein in the TIFT system in the state of Illinois. It's a system that while in its infancy was a good idea for developing blighted areas, it's something that's gotten out of control, and it's diverting funds away from our education system while at the same time putting an additional burden on property owners. Now, I've served on my school board, I'm in my seventh year, but my experience with school funding goes back to 2000 when my children were young and I got involved in my first referendum campaign in Mount Prospect. And that's when I was first started to learn about the dysfunction in our school funding process here in Illinois. And since that time, I also was on the board of our Education Foundation in District 57, and I started a music scholarship fund, a non-for-profit in Mount Prospect, to help students who want to participate in our music programs, but their families may not have the means to afford the fees, the instrument rental, cost of private lessons, and any other costs that go along with participating in the music programs. I'm a professional musician by trade and a part-time music instructor, so that's something that's very important to me, and I was very pleased to see all the honors that your students received this evening. And I'm happy to say that I've had the opportunity to work with some students from Palatine High School who have come to me for private instruction. So, a strong economy requires that we have a strong public education system in the state, and that goes from pre-K through college. And I will be an advocate for strength in our communities by making sure that our public schools are strong. So, I'm here this evening to ask each of you for your support. If you happen to live in the 27th Legislative District, that's part of District 211, but not all of it, and also to let your friends and neighbors, your constituents, know about me and that they can count on me to advocate for their interests. You can go to my website, it's joeforstatesenate.com, and there you can request a yard sign or make a contribution to help me in my efforts. We're just about a month out from the campaign, so I'm very appreciative of any support that I can get. And I would thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to address you this evening. Thanks, and I'll leave some information with the Board President.
You can also leave it with Mr. Kovak, please. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. That was our only speaker for this evening. We'll move on to our presentation. Dr. Cates?
Board, we're building on the theme you heard a little bit earlier about software programming and construction. I'm going to have Dr. Small introduce some wonderful teachers to us and talk to us about the programs we have in programming.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. It's my privilege to be joined by two of our computer science teachers in the district. To my right, John Nally, who you met earlier today, is in his 30th year of teaching at Palatine High School in the math department. And Charles Nichols is in his second year of teaching at Framed High School within the math department. Tonight, we'd like to show you our extensive design that we have for students who are interested in software design, computer science. There are many opportunities within this district, and I think this is one great example of high-skilled opportunities for our students that allow them to see if they like something, and if they have the passion and the desire, continue on, can do so in a series of classes along the way. So, our software design pathway is a part of our college majors and career clusters, and you've seen this multiple times, our 16 clusters that we've divided our different areas of interest in for college majors and career exploration, which are known throughout the state as well as the nation. The software design pathway actually shows up in two of these clusters, both the Interactive and Information Technology, as well as the STEM, Science, Technology, and Engineering and Math Cluster. So that a student and parent, if they were exploring these two particular clusters, would click on these two and would see the same pathway show up in each one for software design. Now, you may look at this chart and say, wow, that's a lot of coursework. Actually, what we've done is we've simplified the curriculum guide, which is over about 80 pages worth of courses. So, if you think about a student or parent who's sitting down and getting ready for their meeting with their counselor and thinking, okay, I'm getting ready to select my next round of courses, I'm interested in software design. What is it should I take? Currently, if they look at our course curriculum guide, they would have to know what departments to look in, and then they would have to choose those courses based on their own experience or their parents' experience. So, what we've tried to do is take the coursework, this is the coursework that gets vetted by our local industry people, that's developed by our teachers, to kind of narrow down the amount of courses they have to look at to a manageable set of pathway directions. So, this is not about the base graduation requirements. The student still has to complete those. A student also may be picking their coursework for their college preparation if they're preparing for particular universities or set of universities they'd like to apply for. They also may be selecting courses on their particular interest or passion, for example, such as music, art, culinary skills. But what we'd like our students to do is when they get to at least one of their electives, is to really think about what is it what I want to do when I graduate from high school? And explore that, see if they like it, and if they do like it, to continue on. So, a student who's interested in our software design pathway would have these series of courses that they would be able to select from. The core courses would be the courses that apply directly to software development. So, a student who would take one of these courses in that first row would find out very quickly whether they like software design or they don't. The supplemental courses in the second row, these are courses that actually were started on the list by our teachers and confirmed by our industry leaders that a student who's designing software, who has some of these other background courses, has much better and faster development in their apps and within their program design. And you'll see in there an element of design out of our art classes, web design, as well as some other deeper technology aspects in terms of computer generation. The enhancement courses, which is the third row, these are a little bit different in terms of a straightforward software design student, but what it does is it kind of broadens their mind as to what else is available to them that's similar to software design in terms of connecting to a computer. So, this would be the electronics, the computer repair, network administration, and security, which deals with cybersecurity as well as digital electronics. So, what we've tried to do is take an 80-page guide, and for someone who wants to look at software design, make it simpler and more condensed for them to look at along the way. So, within our core courses, this is the sequence of our actual computer science, software design courses. We have two different places where students can start. They can start at M256, which is an entry-level course where they need no experience behind it, or if they have a little bit higher math level or some prior computer experience, they may jump right in at one of our AP courses. Either way, there's a series of four classes for them to take across all four years of high school should this be something they want to explore further and develop more skills within.
So, the first class that I'd like to introduce is our M256 class. It's our introductory level class that we have for programming. And the best part is there is no experience needed. We say as long as you can turn a computer on, sometimes more importantly, turning it back off, you have plenty of qualifying, you're probably qualified for the class is what we're using. The three languages that we use are JavaScript, HTML, and CSS. Together, we use these to teach students the fundamentals of coding, logic, and some of the nitty-gritty stuff of the basics of what they need to know. At the end of the day, they create web-based interactive games that you can play on your web browsers such as Google Chrome, Internet Firefox, or yeah, Internet Firefox. And then, at the end of the day, it's really a class for anyone who's trying to dip their toe into the coding world. The second class I'd like to introduce is our M319 class, which is our AP Computer Science Principles class. This class is more so a focus on how computing and technologies affect the world around us. Some of our popular topics are web security and safety, in which we dive into the process of encrypting and decrypting secret messages. And then, we also talk about interweb connectivity and some of the protocols that go with online data transfer. Some of the languages that we use, we again use JavaScript, HTML, CSS to create those web-based games, but we also use Python to create some data analysis programs as well.
In the Computer Science A class, that is the class that gets the students ready for the AP exam in the language of Java, the students come from one of the two other classes that Charles just mentioned, but it also, some of them have actually taken both. So, they've come in with a little bit more about the ethics, they know a little more about programming. The idea is to not only just individually program, but also we work in teams as well. So, they learn that in the computer world, when you're writing a program, you're going to be working with other people in your company, and that is the one thing that we try to emphasize as they get ready for the AP exam. As well as the last thing that they do when all that is done is we will let them come up with a project of their own, something that they would like to see finish this year with. One of my favorite stories, I've been teaching it for 27 years. We started with C++ then Pascal, you know, Pascal, C++. So, back in when we were doing Pascal, one of the young ladies that took the class, her mother owned a business in Palatine, and she would always do her payroll by hand. And so, she wrote a program for her mother that could do the payroll for her company.
Another class I'd like to introduce to you is our M448 class, which is our mobile apps development class. This is where students are going to apply a variety of their programming skills to develop web applications. They work extensively as a team to use their problem-solving skills, their collaboration skills, to create an app from start to finish. They have to create, together as a team, create an idea. They have to research implementation strategies, and they also have to apply their knowledge that they've gained in order to create these apps from start to finish. They use two different languages, Java and Swift, and they're able to actually create Android apps and iPhone apps both.
And then, if they wish, they can take the independent study class, and that's the four gentlemen that you met earlier, that's the class they're in right now. So, they've had all this background in all these different languages, so now it gives them a chance, if there was something that really piqued their interest, to continue with. So, those boys ended up doing an app development. We also have students in this, we're lucky right now at Palatine, we have eight students in the independent study, but they're working on Python, C++, anything that they learned in one of the previous languages. And the nice thing about that is they're actually integrated into our AP class, so I have built-in mentors and people that will actually help the other students with some questions and things like that. But it is a project-based course. By the end of the year, they will be doing something that they have wanted to create from the beginning. And again, the nice thing is it gives those, like those four gentlemen that you met earlier, a really good chance to just continue with their passion.
So, outside of our intense coursework that we have, we also have after-school opportunities. And we'd like to share a little bit about what happened at our District 211, or co-District 211 hackathon. And I do have to say before these gentlemen tell you what happened in detail, when Dr. Cates told me we were doing a hackathon, my head kind of turned a little bit because being naive in the vocabulary of computer scientists, I was thinking about security hacks, which is not what a hackathon is. A hackathon is computer programmers who gather for a large period of time, usually multiple days, and develop programs as a group. And this was a great opportunity for our students.
Yeah, and they develop from scratch and they just hack away at it, and that's what we wanted to clarify as well. The boys that you met earlier as well, and then some other students- The boys that you met earlier as well, and then some other students from around the school district, each school had two representatives, two student representatives. And the one thing I think that was the greatest thing about this, it was student-run. Now, obviously with the help of Dr. Cates and Mike Althert at Palatine and Bob Schutz to be able to make things work, they ended up, they had run an actual Hackathon in Chicago with another group. They wanted to bring it to 211, so it was called Code 211. And what I really liked about it was they focused on the beginning person. So they had run some workshops, they also opened it up to if they wanted to come back the second day. So instead of doing an overnight, and a lot of the students have done this, where they'll go to a college Hackathon, and they'll spend 24 straight hours working, but luckily, 211, it was a two-day affair. We got them out of there, then they could come back the next day. And they were really good about the students providing workshops so they could show them how to run web pages and apps, and then the students could take off from there. They could do anything they wished once they learned that, or there was also a competition that Charles will mention in a few moments, but it was based on, could you improve student life or family life? So that was kind of the theme of the Hackathon, was you had to come up with an app or a website that could improve the family or student life.
So I'm going to dive in a little bit about some of our winners that we had. And what's one of the greatest things about this is some of these success stories. The first one I want to talk about is our third-place winner, Team Air Care. I actually had a couple of these students in my class last year, and they were in the introductory class, and they came in with no coding experience. So throughout the time of one and a half years of schooling and dedication and hard work, they were able to come up with a quality program that won them third place. So I'm going to run through the list really quickly. Our third-place team, Air Care, they were able to make a search engine in which you were able to type in a city or a zip code. It would then bring that city up on a Google map and then give them a scale of 0 to 500 on the air quality for that particular city. Again, the underlying message behind this is they wanted to promote health awareness and also competitiveness between cities for tourism. Our second-place winner was Vimy. They had used some online API documentation that's public, along with some of their coding skills, to create a FaceTime-style app, program actually, but one of the benefits of it is it had live translation. Their presentation included a lady who spoke French. She sat in the other room, and we were able to video broadcast her and FaceTime her. And while she was speaking in French, the words were actually coming up in English as text, as subtitles for us, as live translations. And then, so that one was mainly opening broader communications and kind of breaking down those language barriers. And then our first-place winners was the menu assistance, in which you could take a picture of a menu, and based off of certain criteria, they would, you would tweet out to their particular account, and they would tweet you back which product you should purchase based on specifications. Their presentation was based off of protein content in food, so they were able to take a picture of a Taco Bell menu, and based off the protein content, they tweeted back, actually, they said, hey, you should purchase your tacos, those have the highest content of protein inside of them. So all in all, we had levels of all sorts of people, and it was an amazing success for what we had there.
One of the challenges each group had as we went around to judge them was they had to present in three minutes what they had created. And one of the items of importance that I picked up from our industry meetings that was obviously a great factor within this District 211 Hackathon, was the fact that computer programmers sometimes miss that they have to have the ability to communicate with others. And as John referenced, that with some of the coursework where we do group creation within the programming, that's what the industry member said, is that you might get into an entry-level job with your knowledge, but you will advance with your ability to communicate what you're doing with either the customers, your teammates, or whoever it is within your industry team, your company team, to move forward along the way. So that Code 211 Hackathon certainly did allow that opportunity for our students. So before we answer questions, I'd like to thank John and Charles for joining me tonight. Charles especially, as he was just married yesterday. So his new wife is at home waiting for him. Any questions we can answer for you?
Thank you very much, it was excellent, and I like to hear about the day, so that was very nice. Any other questions or comments?
I think it's amazing how far we've gone with technology, just from, you know, getting computers in the classrooms, you know, a dozen years, well, more than a dozen years ago, but just, it's just phenomenal. And I have to tell you, we've had PowerPoint presentations that have been truly good, truly good. This one has really stood out, so whoever put this together, it's phenomenal. Maybe it's the skyline, maybe it's the color, maybe it's the...
It's because the kids were smiling at you in the pictures.
And it's just really great. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate, you know, the staff and everything you do for the kids. And I'm so glad that they're taking advantage of it. It's just tremendous. Thank you.
It seems like to me that some of our graduates would be able to go out into the field and start working right after high school as opposed to going to college? I mean, it just sounds so advanced at this point.
A lot of students do walk out of high school with, like, whereas you say, our AP-level classes are college-level classes, and so it gives them a tremendous advantage, just even if they're not going straight into the workforce. It gives them a level up when they enter into those classes because they're seeing a lot of things that previous students haven't. We've had some, a great amount of students come back to like our schools and say, hey, when we saw this particular element of our class, we were light-years ahead of where other students were. So we're seeing the success stories happening just years even after we've implemented these classes.
I guess to sort of dovetail into Mr. Young's question about students who may go directly into the workforce, are there certifications or, you know, professional-type credentials that we support through the pathway that allow students to do that?
Well, I can tell you what the industry member said, because that is one of the questions we ask each one of the cluster groups as they come in. In terms of what they look for, they look for the ability to adapt to whatever they want them to do. So I said, are there particular languages we should teach our high school students? And the answer was no. The more you can teach them, the more they will learn to adapt to the language and pick up pieces along the way. So I guess that would be one aspect of it in terms of their preparation for that piece of it.
I'd say again, it's the collaboration and the problem-solving skills and the teamwork skills that are really what transfer, besides the knowledge that they gain from their classrooms themselves, and those are the skills that really pass on through the years and that are really noticed by companies.
And being able to maybe put themselves through school by, you know, making these apps and being able to do it that way, so.
And ultimately, they're going to get a hands-on test when they interview, or they're going to say, create this for me.
Got you. Absolutely.
So, quick question. I know Harper offers some X HTML courses. Are any of these courses also considered dual-credit?
So at this time, we have reached out to Harper for multiple years for opportunities for dual-credit, and this time we have not been able to partner with them, but we continue to have that door open. Northern Illinois University, through their university center, is looking to have a pathway of computer science, and that would be our hope, that that will also encourage the partnership between us, Harper, and then NIU for dual-credit in multiple colleges then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will bring us to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFaver?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. We have our special reports, we have our Freedom of Information Act requests. This is for your information. Any questions? This will bring us to our class-size committee report, also for your information, questions or comments? And then we've also been given our 2018-2019 budget sequence and development. Is there any questions or comments? Moving on to our new business, we have House Bill 261, local transportation funds to assist the homeless students. This is for our information, questions or comments?
I appreciate the input, and it's amazing how much we end up spending for one student, because if I read this correctly, you know, cabbying from the Chicagoland area, we're spending about $31,000 a year. And that is, that is an awful lot of money, and it, working at a nonprofit that works with homeless people in our transitional living program and permanent supportive housing, this means so much to have some kind of stability for the kids. So I think that that's really important. However, I do have some questions in regards to how we can best present, you know, the school aspect supporting this, yet being aware of the financial considerations and everything else that's involved. I know from the information you gave us here that March 13th, there's going to be an opportunity for the various groups to meet, so I think that's really a good start. I have some questions, and I don't know if you want me to just give that to Dr. Cates or just kind of share some of the things now, maybe they can be brought up a little bit or addressed?
Well, I think we set this time aside, so if you don't mind sharing your questions, that would be great.
Okay. I think it's, again, it's just really important when a family runs into a hardship to be able to get some kind of help, at least for that month or two months before they end up, you know, with an eviction. And a lot of times, people are not aware of the resources that are available to them because they've never experienced. So one of the things that's important is to let the community know that there are resources out there, whether it's assistance through the township, because they help also, and the different nonprofits have some different funding. There's some grants available, there's some rapid rehousing, there's just a variety of things, but unfortunately, people are not aware of it, and sometimes it gets to be too late. So this concept is good. However, you know, some of the questions I have is, we have students that are in multiple districts. If the school district is supposed to pay for the housing, which district ends up paying? Along with that is, and I think one that's really important, is how long do we subsidize? And, you know, for rental or mortgage, and then what's the incentive for the household to become self-sufficient, to get out of this cycle? Which could involve maybe participating in money management, it could involve in career coaching, you know, a variety of things that are offered through some different agencies. You know, offering the case management, things of that nature. And one of the things that the agencies incur is administrative costs, and that's always really difficult because a lot of agencies have ended up closing because they're not getting funding on things. And even if you get some state grants, there's very little money that, you know, comes for the administrative costs. So there's a lot that has to be done in that. So those are some of the types of questions that I have. I was a little concerned originally when I read the first blurb about it for my ISB because it also spoke about paying some other bills. Well, how many bills do we pay? So there has to be some kind of limit. So these are some of the questions that I have, and I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to explore, but to really take a look at it, how it affects the school, how it affects the student, and how you can help and make that transition quickly to that self-sufficiency.
We are looking forward to the meeting on March 13th, as you described, for exactly the reasons of trying to sort out the many detailed questions that school districts will face, and as you described, that agencies locally here will also face. So the ISBE sponsors different regions that have homeless liaisons, and those liaisons are the ones who are getting together to help gather district input, but then also to share what the backdrop is, if you will, for what they're expecting to have happen. So the balance that we are given from the legislators is to say, if you have X amount of tens of thousands of dollars that you're going to spend for transportation, and that is mandated by law, then why don't you work locally to see if you might be able to keep the family local? So that is the right-minded agenda that was the impetus for this. We believe that the meeting on the 13th is going to help us to sort through some of those details, you know? It is very tricky. One of your questions is, how long does the subsidy last? Or how long does a family remain under this category? That is, that has not been our question to answer, is how I would answer that. We have not been given a clear directive, we have not been told a clear parameter, and we don't set a deadline by which a family is no longer considered McKinney-Vento eligible. While you will read certain time windows in the regulations, it has been our experience that life circumstances that helped contribute to a family being declared eligible under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act often just take a different shape. And it has been our experience that the regional liaisons are reluctant to remove someone from assistance, once that assistance has begun, and they continue to have young people in schools. You know, I, again, I would say that this has all been driven by wanting to keep families intact in the school of their origin.
And that makes perfect sense. I know with our transitional living program, it's basically a program for two years, and the goal is to transition the person out, the family out, into some type of permanent housing. So that, you know, it's the two-year program there. I know having to rely on the cabs is not good at times, because no matter how hard you vet them, and you hope that you have the best driver, sometimes the driver is late, they're picking up another child, they get to the school late, so there's just a whole number of things that are involved in it. So there is a great benefit of keeping the kids. Right now, HUD has changed a lot of things, and they're looking at permanent supportive housing, basically for people who are chronically homeless and have a disabling condition. So that's an important step, and they're working on getting families, you know, with children placed into these permanent supportive housing programs.
All of those are exactly the scenario, so every year, we have approximately 250 to 300 students who by the end of the year have qualified to receive homeless services. I can tell you that on the graduation days, when our office, we know who these students are, and when we hear their name called and we get to hand them a diploma, what I will say to you is that that is a young person who has benefited from the hard work of many people to coordinate daily cabs and cabs-to-games and just so many details that go unnoticed. So we do invest substantial effort and energy into it to keep families engaged in the one component of a young person's life, that being school. It is not the circumstances created by these young people that have led to their challenges. And through the Realtors Against Homelessness, we have immediate assistance. So we have traveled this way a little bit before, and we have been able to use, I'm going to make up a word here, but we've been able to use unbureaucratized money for this purpose, and that has gone to purposes just like you've described: eviction avoidance, short-term relief. And so we are a little bit more familiar with some of the circumstances. Mr. Hildebrand's going to participate in the meeting, and I can say that the liaisons have recognized our district for our work with the homeless students, and they are looking to us for some of the experiences that we've had as a result of, you know, some of the funding we've had available. So to your questions, we do feel far more confident than we first brought up the item a month ago, that there is a firewall, if I can use that term, between the district liability and the liability of the agency creating the housing arrangement. and the liability of the agency creating the housing arrangement. So that was a question that came up, and that was an important one. It is simply the district using the funds. And thereafter, those people who do this work would be the holders of that temporary arrangement. That does not fall to us to pay the bill to a to a place. We are simply channeling money then to a local agency who is a designated and recognized provider to homeless transition services.
So this is meant to be a preventative equivalency to having to utilize the same dollar amount in transportation. How is that transportation equivalency set if they don't relocate? Is it, is there some burden of proof for that? I mean, how do we know somebody's not going to say, hey, we're going to move to Madison and pick a distant relative in order to receive benefits?
So I, I'm going to provide some information. I'm not sure it's exactly the question, but let me provide some information. So when a family is homeless, they may move out of the district or they may stay in the district. When they stay in the district, it's obvious. We would have the costs on both sides of that, right? There is only us. There are times when we will provide a cab, which we rarely do for typical students who go from one school to another. If a student's house has burned down or something like that, they would qualify as homeless, and we might provide a cab to go from the north end to the south end, if you will. When a student leaves a district and goes for whatever temporary housing they're going to have into a new district, you now have a split district situation. And so in that instance, the two districts are legally expected to share the costs 50-50. So the way we typically work is we take the ride in, you take the ride home. So that the, you know, the bill is shared. The student has the option of staying in the home district or going to the new district. It is when they go to the new district then that that district becomes the holder of the student, if you will. And they would put them on a bus, and they would, you know, take them over. When they return back to the original home district, that's where we see this kind of scenario most likely to occur. So if a student were to move into District 214 or into U46, and they were to secure some housing through one of our local homeless agencies, then our funds would work closely with the agency to see what is the means by which that housing can be arranged through that agency. So we aren't the person to go find the apartment. It was more through the agency.
Right, but let's say we're using the example of $31,000, right? So you're saying that's split then, correct? Between us and the home district, right? So if we provide the housing to prevent that equivalency being spent in transportation instead being spent for our local district housing, are we on the hook then for that $31,000? Are we on the hook for half of that? Do we split that with the other? How do we establish they were going to make a presence in that other district in order to get the cost-sharing model out of that? Or are we just picking up that $31,000 burden and doubling our expenses in order to keep this person within our district?
Yeah, excellent questions. And so there is no quota per student amount.
There's no distance either, geography-wise?
Right, there is no designated distance, right. It would be done as a means to allocate an amount for the housing. Now, if we were just to take the
And this is just speaking to the law? Or the language of the law is the equivalency of the transportation funding is the threshold? So how do we set the threshold?
Yeah, so those details, we don't have a designated threshold.
Is that on us as a district to establish under the law?
I don't think that they've answered that question yet. But let's take the $30,000 just relative to a $2,000 a month housing subsidy. So even at $2,000 a month, we would be at $24,000, and we would be ahead $6,000. That's what their rationale is.
Relatively speaking, if you're not saying that the $30,000 is a $15,000, $15,000 split?
Yes, and we
So we would be behind then, a total of $9,000 using those numbers?
Well, again, we believe that that 50-50 split remains the same arrangement. That the obligation, if you will, remains a split, shared responsibility.
You're saying we would be three ahead with $12,000, our burden, $12,000 the other district's burden?
Yes, and that's the theory, if you will, behind the legislation.
But if we offered them assistance to keep them here, how do you know that they were going to another district? And how do you establish that? In order to establish this split?
That's exactly
That's just a question.
That's exactly right. So if they stay in the district, it remains the single district holder would be the bearer of that cost. That's correct. If there is no other district involved, then the sole district remains the full holder.
But I think the most important thing is if the family can remain here, you've got the stability. Hopefully, self-sufficiency can kick in quicker. And because if you don't have to worry about where you're going to live, life is a lot easier. And I know that a number of the families we've worked with who have transitioned into the transitional living program, they've had children and they've had, you know, the cab has come and picked them up and everything. And that definitely has not been ideal. If they could have stayed in the place that they were, that would have been great. But I think the key is, how quickly can we help the people and turn it around so they get that self-sufficiency back? I think that is the most important key there. And yeah, it could be great cost savings and help the family and move forward.
Right, but under the law, as it's passed, it's tied to the cost of transportation. So you have to establish the cost of transportation. And unless you can, and the burden, that's the question. How is, who has the burden to prove that this displaced student was going to go to location B?
Yeah, those are all excellent questions. I'm confident that on the 13th, we'll have some answers.
Is that an open meeting? Is there
I'm sure that it is, yeah.
So what I was going to say is I think what we've determined is that there's a lot of scenarios under the homeless arena. There's, you know, it could be something as a whole family displaced. It could be families being separated or already separated, and the cost to share. There's too many still open-ended questions. I think after the meeting on the 13th, it sounds like that perhaps we might want some information on time and location of the 13th, if you can provide us with that.
Sure.
That would be great, and if it's an open meeting. And once we collect more information, I would be interested in understanding is as a group, are we trying to develop best practices from district to district? You know, the cost-sharing of rides between two districts works one way, and the cost of whether or not you stay within your own district works completely differently. I would assume that if we were to put somebody in our own, keep people in our own district, we would use our own busing, like we would with any bus route. So the cost is significantly less than cabbying from Chicago back to the suburbs. So that's, I think we're kind of way in front because we don't have enough information. And I think what I'm hearing everyone says, we'd like more information, and we'd like to stay abreast of the topic.
Right, but it's not just busing them within our district. It's also paying for their housing on top of busing them, right?
If we're, if we were just comparing what you were saying from transportation costs from shared district. But yes, we would obviously be paying for their living expenses as well, for their housing. And that's the collective information we get that we're looking for. We don't have enough information, in my opinion.
Yeah, the State Board has developed and now released some checklist items. So as people have been expressing their experiences, and that's exactly what I think the meeting on the 13th is about, is to help walk through different real-life scenarios to help districts sort through those exact kinds of questions.
And this legislation's been on the book for a significant amount of time, right? It's not something that was just developed this last year.
Yeah, it's recent, yeah. Yeah, and that's part of the complication, is that they don't yet have all of the procedures to go along with the legislation.
Anything additional?
Thank you.
The next item is Board of Education Communications. This is for our information as well as discussion, questions, or comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on a letter that the board had received in December and the response that was developed. I'm not sure. I believe that the superintendent responded to the letter that was addressed to us. And I was wondering if that was under direction or if that was arbitrarily done? I think the email said that the letter came to the administration center and the superintendent came to the board president. And the two of you had discussed it and then talked to Legal and issued a response.
Sure, in regards to, does anyone else have any questions on top of that before I go into? Yes, that letter came. The letter itself, as we've all seen and read, asked for a response from me, the board president. Therefore, I thought it was appropriate to answer the ledger. Although the content of the letter provided, in my opinion, some areas of question of an umbrella of negotiations. And so I expressed those concerns as well to Dr. Cates. And that's when Legal was brought in too.
So my question then becomes, with the response to correspondences to the board, obviously, the response would come back as you're the spokesperson for the board unless the board discusses a different person to correspond. So it makes sense that the letter would ask for a response from the board president. But the response then wasn't a response that the board had developed. Is that correct? I mean, my concern is that you had taken it upon yourself and responded on behalf of the board.
First of all, that was, number one, never the intent. If that's the way it came across, I apologize. But no, I did not respond on behalf of the board. That's why Dr. Cates responded with guidance of Legal.
So who directed the superintendent to respond?
Because I thought it was a letter to me. The response was how I would respond to any communication that comes to us. So I think there's two things that we should clarify. One, we get letters individually via email, like it would be addressed to Lucia Burke, to Lucia Burke, but to our Board of Education email. So that would be one form of a communication. Then we have this communication that asks for a response from me. And then we also have communications that we receive as a board individually so that Mr. Hinshaw may get something from a community member and no one else does. So we have various forms of communication.
So then my question is, since the board can't direct the superintendent to respond individually, it has to be an action of the board, such as when we direct the superintendent to make a specific response. My concern here is, what prevents any one of us from just abusing the administration and saying, please respond to this personal correspondence I received?
Yeah, I'm going to jump in here for a moment. I think if there's a specific concern, state what that concern is. I don't think we need to focus on something that has happened in the past. What would you like to see done in regards to letters that come into the board president? Any kind of letter that comes into the board president? What are you recommending?
Well, in this case, if it's addressed to the Board of Education and each board member receives the same piece and it's directed to us, then I think it should be something where we discuss if we're going to respond as a board and then decide to take action cohesively. None of us can speak on behalf of any other board member here. So when we didn't have a discussion on the response to something like that, it basically leaves out the other six board members that may need to participate in that discussion.
But unfortunately, sometimes timeliness is involved. And we can't discuss every letter that we receive from a community member here at this table. We have an opportunity for our community to come and speak. And many of them have, and they continue to do so. And they're always welcome to continue to do that.
And in that case, we direct that person at the podium to leave their information with the superintendent. And then we clearly direct the superintendent to respond in that setting. When it's a, when it's a letter or a package or any of those mechanisms, you know, we're not directing the superintendent when we receive that.
And we've gotten plenty of other letters about a variety of different things. We've read through them. We've given the, I believe that we have allowed our board president to ask the superintendent, you know,
Well, that's not how the policy's written. So if the policy requires us as a board to take action to direct a response or to designate somebody in an official capacity to respond, that's a step that we need to take.
Then maybe that needs to go to the policy committee to take a look at that. But I think we have to look at everything in general and not focus on one particular letter. If you have a concern, then you have to
Yeah, I'm not discussing the item or the issue within the item. I'm just discussing the procedure that occurred. Because we received a written response on behalf of the superintendent, on behalf of the, you know, and then this was basically a response that was issued and, in my opinion, conveyed that it was a board response.
No, I disagree with you on that because the question was asked directly to, the letter was addressed directly to the president and was asked for the president to respond.
Right, and the response came from the superintendent.
This was not necessarily a letter to the board.
But the response was from the superintendent. So the superintendent had to receive direction from someone, and it wasn't the board as a whole. So when the superintendent responded, it conveyed that this was a 211 response that the board had directed. At least that's how I perceive any correspondence that our superintendent initiates.
And in reading the policy, I understand the policy to be that if any board member receives a direct correspondence, that it is to be forwarded to the superintendent and it is to the superintendent's discretion, perhaps through discussion with that board member or more than one board member, to respond. My understanding is that it's the superintendent's responsibility to respond as forwarded information is provided to him along with discussion and perhaps direction.
Right, but in this particular case or in this process that was initiated, it was something directed to the Board of Education?
No, it wasn't. It was addressed
It was directed to the president of the Board of Education.
President. Right, I have it in front of me. It says, Dear President and Board of Education.
It doesn't say "and."
Dear Board, Board of Educat, where is it? It's over here. Dear President, Board of Education, High School District 211.
And she is the president, Board of Education?
I read it as President and Board of Education. Maybe I misinterpreted that.
I read it as President of Board of Education.
That's the way I read it, too.
Okay, then maybe I misunderstood because I believe each of us received a copy. And it came across to me that when each of us received that hard copy, that it was intended to be addressed to the board. And it was a courtesy to address it to the board president as a spokesperson for the board, per policy. And maybe in the future, if this occurs, how would we treat that then? That's the whole point of the discussion, is moving forward.
I think that's what Anna asked you, is how would you recommend it be treated?
Right, so if we get a letter from somebody that's addressed to the board or to the board as a whole, I mean, I'm just one person. My recommendation would be that it gets put on an agenda and the board discusses whether a response is needed or not.
So we wait 30 days to respond? Or however many days to the next board meeting?
If that's, if it's an emergency that we have to call a session or something, then that's a possibility as well.
So I think, thank you. There's, I think there's a lot of, like I described before, there's a lot of ways we get communication as a board. And if we want to develop a procedure for that, that makes a lot of sense. But I want to make sure we think this in a 360. What works for one has to work for all. So that means if we get an email, do we then hold an email for 30 days? Do we have a blanket statement? We don't have a board meeting for 30 days. We will respond to it as individual board members. So I think there's a lot of logistics. If that's the case, then we just got to put some thought into it, put some points down, and then we just keep going around. some points down, and then we just keep going around till we land in a place that makes sense. I don't know how I feel about being, getting an email and having to wait 30 days to respond to it because we don't have a board meeting and it doesn't require a special meeting and an emergency. I sometimes get things as, I don't, Dear President, can you help me understand how the National Honor Society works? Do we need to wait 30 days to do that? Of course not. That is something that we would flip right over to the superintendent because that's the role of administration. So that's what I'm saying. When we look at these communications, we have to look at all of them, not just a special one that came in through the mail.
And, you know, I believe that most of the communications we've got, I mean, we've gotten things, somebody may not be pleased about a particular teacher. That has to go through the administration. A coaching issue, a question about scheduling, a question about fields, a question about some outside agencies using our pools. So those are some of the things that we've gotten, and it gets, you know, directed to the superintendent because the administration here are the right people to be able to answer those questions. So I think that the way we've handled it is good. Maybe we could take a look at it and see if there's any particular issues that might arise where we need to maybe get a consensus from the board, but I would certainly leave that up to the board president because if he or she has received a letter about something and they have a question, I would believe that they would contact us and say, hey, I got this. What do you think about this? Or maybe, you know, just to make sure that we've gotten a copy of it, if it's something at that particular level. But most of these other things, we've got the administration to take care of it. And I think they need to be the ones to respond and make some decisions in regards to it.
So we've had several thoughts. Do we want to develop a procedure or not? Or do we want to continue to do, work in the fashion that we've been working? And I guess I'd just also like to note, we, as a board, or at least I, as a president, we don't get an overabundance of communication, that I think that a lot of extra time and energy from all parts should be put on this in order to develop something so, something that I think seems to be working.
Maybe since this board policy was last revised, you know, a long time ago, maybe it'll be worthwhile to take a look at it. Maybe there needs to be some kind of clarification. Because of all the social media, how do we best respond to those things?
Which policy are you referring to? We have several.
Okay, the one-
The one that was forwarded to us that's last revised in 1997?
Yes, BDBH slash KD. It's the one on the Board of Education Communication. Okay.
Title, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
Do we want to send it to the Policy Committee?
I'd like to see the list of things that people want to see the Policy Committee consider before I agree as a member of the Policy Committee to spend any time looking at this policy.
So you're basically vetoing a request that we may make unless your conditions are met?
No.
Well, that's what I heard. I just heard that unless you get a list of what you, what we want, you don't want to bring it up in committee.
What he doesn't want, is how I heard it, is that he doesn't want to go to Policy Committee without any factual information from this board to review with Policy Committee. He doesn't want to call, ask the Policy Committee to talk about what we may talk about.
And for me, it comes down to this one line here under requests to be heard, and it says, "In order that the board may fairly inadequately discharge its responsibilities, those who wish to make requests, representations, or proposals to the board are requested to direct and describe these to the superintendent, who will deal with them according to the rules adopted by the board." And then there's the intent of the rules. And so all I'm saying is that if we're going to have the superintendent respond, it should be based on direction from the board as a whole. That's all. And when that direction is required. That's the clarification I'm looking for in policy.
And my understanding of that section is to speak and present at a board meeting. It doesn't say anything in that particular session, section, related to electronic correspondence or any other correspondence. It just relates to, it says, it's particular, public participation at regular meetings is what that section is referring to.
Correct. And that's typically how we get our communication, is through the public participation. And maybe that's something that needs to be additionally added to correspondences that the board may receive as a whole.
Again, I think we have to be very careful because otherwise, every piece of correspondence could be brought up at each meeting and then we're waiting 30 days. I-
It's normal. It is customary, and it is expected for the superintendent to carry on the business of this district at the will of the board, as defined in our policy. Dr. Cates, are you confused about any of the issues or how you would communicate openly in an ongoing way about the business of the district with respect to anybody through any form or any mechanism where they might try to communicate with you or the board?
It seems terribly hindering to me that we would have to have communications come here for you to tell me to respond. I respond frequently to different messages that any of you might get, and then I communicate that to, in some other form, to the rest of the people commonly. So we try to respond within a small timeframe of a window, you know, as, just as anyone would want a response. And we try to keep you all informed as well. So to me, it's, would be out of our comfort zone. It would not be our typical way of doing practice to delay for weeks, to have you all give us direction to respond to items that we are charged with administering and facilitating and coordinating as what we do.
I would say that when you respond to something, you've always kind of followed up with us to let us know that something is forthcoming. And you've usually sent us maybe a copy of it, you know, prior to it be mailed or going out, whatever it is. So I'm very comfortable with the process we currently have because you share that information, and I think that's something that we work out with the superintendent.
And Anna, if you had an objection to what was going out, would you be comfortable as an individual board member directing the administration not to move forward with something? And would you be acting on behalf of the board in an individual capacity by preventing that from going out?
I would contact the superintendent and express a concern that I have if there's something that is really troubling me. And maybe I might be looking at something at a different point of view, and maybe the clarification and the conversation would support whatever that document was. If I had a further concern, I would also talk to, you know, whoever the board president is, again, to get another perspective. And again, I'm only one board member, but I believe that anything that deals with the school, with our staff, with our administration, our students, I feel very confident that our superintendent and his administration is able to respond to any of the issues. And they do keep us informed. I think that that's really important.
And I also feel like I trust the superintendent in a way that if he heard from more than just me or enough that he would start to say, this isn't something that should go out. I need to find out what, how does the board feel?
I guess, I guess that's a question at this table, and I know I haven't, and I heard Mr. Hinshaw and Mrs. Klimkowitz say it, is that when I do have concerns about anything, I share them. And then the conversation happens. That's not a board member giving direction. That's not one board member doing, that's the role of the board and each of us to say, wait a second. I'm not saying, don't do it or do it. I'm saying, I'm not sure how I feel about this, or here's why I'm concerned, and talk it through with the superintendent for that reason, that it may put the brakes on something or it may not because that's why seven people have a perspective. So I guess we need to come to the conclusion that you have as a board member, that is our role when we see communications come out. And we usually have a timeframe between the communications. It's not like, it's, okay, I'm sending it, I sent it and here, here it is. It's, I'm going to send it in a few hours or-
Or more.
I mean, I think you made a valid point, too, that it's not often that the entire board receives communication like this. And I agree with Mrs. Klimkowitz that I'm comfortable with how it's historically been handled, and I was comfortable the day that this came. And there was information-
See, I didn't see it, I didn't see that email until after. So it wasn't in a window that I was checking my email frequently, so.
Okay, because that day, I'm just going to mention that in the email, Dr. Cates had said he was going to send it near the close of business date, and his email came at 2:20 in the afternoon. And I did receive an email from you at 2:51 the same day saying that you wanted to have this discussion at a future board meeting.
Correct.
So you did see it.
Right after, as it came out, I got the notice when it was sent out that Friday.
Right, but it says, I'll send it at the near of the close of business. That would be another two hours away from when the communication went to, was going to be sent out. So there was ample time to express a concern.
I, too, had received an envelope that was addressed to me, and so I was included in the communication. I did intentionally delay the release, anticipating that I might hear from someone for those two and a half hours.
I think a concern I have is that, in the end, this board has, as it should, given the responsibility of communication in such situations to the superintendent. That is part of his job responsibilities and part of his expertise and professionalism to have such communication on behalf of the school district. And to allow him to do that without any additional restrictions or delay, I think is something that we as a board need to continue to aspire to and continue to hold him to that level of expertise and responsibility. And so I'd like, I would like to see this policy remain as it is, allowing the superintendent, should he have concerns, to communicate with us those concerns, but to hold him responsible for that type of action.
Well, I feel that the, I feel the policy's fine. Mr. Lefever, you were waiting on some other information. Are you okay with the policy?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. In fact, I'm very grateful that the communication the superintendent gives this board. I've worked with several different superintendents before, and Dr. Cates has been probably one of the most informative superintendents I've ever dealt with. So I think he's done a great job.
So then the will of the board would be to lead the policy as it stands?
And again, this isn't a reflection of the administration or the response. It's just the procedure and when, when it, when is a board to, and again, I've been here almost three years, and I don't think any correspondence has been discussed by this board as a whole with regard to our collective discussion and then in issuing of a statement. And so I just, even through everything we went through with the OCR and a lot of, a lot of the other pieces that we had, you know, it's, and again, this goes to the administration being very preemptive, and they're fantastic with the communications. I just think that we are beholden to the community, and we also have a responsibility as a board to put our seven voices together as part of that and maybe not rely on the administration to be the voice that we've been elected to provide. And that is really the impetus of my comments here tonight. So thank you for your patience in the discussion. We can leave the policy as is.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the use of the legal counsel, and this was for our information as well as any questions.
And again, our policy allows it at the discretion of the superintendent and the designee of the board, if I interpret that correctly. And if the superintendent received the same letter, then it would be at his discretion to have the response legally reviewed. And in that case, I wasn't aware that superintendent received a copy as well, so I don't have any issue with the use there.
All right, anyone else in regards to legal? Okay, thank you. We also have our student user fee waiver policy information. We had asked for this information to open up some discussion in regards to, we had talked about driver's ed and what other fees are waived for free and reduced via our policy.
I know I had asked in regards to this. So the bottom line is, we have to do the waiver for free and reduced for the driver's ed.
So the, each question has particulars to it, so I want to be careful that I convey it as it is. This board has previously set a policy that declares that free and reduced shall be considered the same in terms of deserving of a fee waiver. The school code differs a little bit in that you can differentiate a free status versus a reduced price status. And so by our board policy, the shortest answer to the question is yes, free and reduced qualifying individuals would have all of the behind-the-wheel fee waived. Should the board choose to change its policy, it could consider waiving only the fees for those students who qualify for free meals and not waive them for those who qualify for reduced price meals.
Looking at the information that you gave us, for the current school year, the number of reduced is 517 students. I don't, I don't think I'm comfortable, I'm just one, to talk about changing that for 517 students. I think the services we provide for them is much more enriching than what we would get back in return for removing and having them pay for those fees.
So that would be for the entire waiver list there that's included in your report. When you break that down for driver's ed, it actually turns into approximately one-fourth of that number because approximately one-fourth of our students are taking driver ed at a time, if you will. So that 500 becomes, you know, somewhere just over 100, specific to driver's ed.
Am I missing that? Where is the 500? Or did I?
The last line of page two.
Last line of page two.
So these are the free eligible.
Okay, yeah.
And these are the reduced eligible.
Okay.
So this would be across all of the four grades.
Okay, all right. Okay, but it's not the number of students that are actually taking the driver's ed.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking at. It was, it's the total students.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, that's fine with the information you've given us. I know that the board did vote to increase the driver's ed fees, but I'd really like us to continue to, you know, keep that steady, at least for the next couple of years, for those kids who do end up paying for the driver's ed.
Dr. Cates, do you think we should reconsider our policy to remove the expanded qualification? to remove the expanded qualification?
I do not recommend that. No. Free and reduced is a better practice and I think the, every indication is that that would be the course I would recommend.
Do we know what the fee would be to outsource some of that?
To outsource driver's education.
For free and reduced relative to what we charge?
Yeah, so we are examining...
Are we only talking about the behind-the-wheel piece, too?
At this point, our examination is only looking at the behind-the-wheel component.
Outsourcing the behind-the-wheel piece, then that's the...
I, I'm, I'm open to either. I don't, I don't know what our actions are, right?
I'm just trying to understand because we're required to do a certain piece. So we shouldn't, if we're required to do that, we shouldn't be talking about that. We should only be talking about the excess that we're not required to do that we have discretion over.
The, the law over the summer still requires us to do the book training within?
So our own graduation requirement require...
Two eleven or state? Okay, so we can, so the state law relative? Because we can adjust our own graduation requirements, right?
We could.
Okay, so the state law requires us to provide what with regard to driver's ed?
Thirty hours of classroom instruction and six hours of driving.
And that can be either in-house or outsourced?
It can.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
It's only six hours? Okay.
Anything else?
Anybody need any other information in regards to these?
No, thank, thank you very much.
Next, we have our banking request for information. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve Barrington Bank and Trust Company, N.A., owned by Wintrust Financial Services as the district bank for the Board and Student Activities Checking Deposit and Treasury Management Services and for services and collateral as necess... Oops, excuse me, I skipped. Service and authorize a superintendent, superintendent or designee to open accounts and initiate contracts for service and collateral as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Next, we have our potential topics for future discussion. Anyone? This leap brings us to our committee reports. Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization, Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Unfortunately, I was not able to make it. We did our, our negotiating committee and I thought I could run over there, but I was terribly under the weather, so I was not able to be there. But the, one of the summaries is, um, they're going to go ahead with a building project manager and it'll be Nicholas and Associates. So I, and gonna start moving forward for the, the gymnasium, which is an important big step. And they're working on the budget and the districts are participating in helping form that budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Redd, Mr. Dombrowski?
Uh, there's a meeting tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Partners for our community and evening community services. I was not able to attend that meeting. Mr. Kovak would have an update for us, thank you.
I wasn't able to attend personally myself, but I do have some notes. There are, were two new programs for 2018 that were brought forward. The first is a support group for families with children who have autism. That is meeting at the center regularly. And the second is a knitting class under the "I Compete" banner, which is actually being taught by students from Hoffman Estates, Hoffman Estates High School. I think the most noteworthy activity at the most recent meeting, however, was facilitated through the Village of Hoffman Estates. They are putting together a video highlighting organizations that bring benefit to the residents of their community. And they actually were filming this meeting as part of this documentary called "The Heart of Hoffman Estates." So I'm anxious to see what that looks like when it's complete.
Thank you. Parent Connection Committee, Mr. Dombrowski?
Uh, yeah, we haven't met since the last meeting and we'll meet March sixth, is that correct?
Bless you.
I think so. Monday.
Yeah, I believe we did, I think it was right after our Board meeting, though.
Was it after?
Yeah.
Well, at that meeting, we discussed just different forms of communication that we have available. The, the variety of, of ways information is presented and looking for feedback at the next meeting and introducing some of the different portals. We discussed different ways of, of updating the website and getting that information out there. So, um, hopefully people have had a chance to log into the different tools that are available. And I think you provided, Dr. Cates, access to the new online system for, um, I forget what the...
The Student Readiness Plan, hm?
The Student Readiness Plan, right. So each committee member, even though they may have older students, can, can jump in and take a look.
Was the, was that well received? The readiness plan?
People had a great interest in it and wherever we have presented it, it is not uncommon for us to get requests from people whose children are older than freshmen to want to be included in the pilot. So we were, you know, seeking, and this, I think, is a great forum for us to get exactly that kind of parental input and we, we think it will be useful for us about our, our new website as well.
Thank you. This brings us to our announcements. They're there for your review. And then there's, next item would be entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of the meeting lawfully closed under the Open Meeting Act, matter pertaining to an individual student, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz, aye. Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Probable, probable or imminent litigation, workers' compensation settlement. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorize settlements and the pending workman's compensation matters as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz, aye. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting recap? Hearing done, this meeting is adjourned.